We'll now call the March 27th, Terrible City Council Meeting to order. And we'll start tonight with public input. You have Steve Wentworth, who has requested time tonight, and I don't see him here.
John, you're it.
John?
John, you're up.
That's you, I think.
I apologize, I was here to support Steve.
You're really gonna be supporting him.
You just got put in charge.
Yeah. So I believe what Steve was gonna be talking about was basically the project that we have going on out into the old Hills Forests, 358 Belangeroe Street. What we have is we have a contract, we're going into a contract with the current owners, Philip, or excuse me, Dave and Patty Corvo, in which we'll have a closing of May 1st on the property. And the concept behind the property is to reutilize the five greenhouses that are currently out there. Starting in May, roughly in May, we're gonna be opening the first one. We've done some renovations to the main building, we're gonna have that open for greenhouses. But the big portion that we're gonna be looking for is, we're gonna be building duplexes out there for individual homeless veterans to be able to come into and reside at. Now Steve is gonna have more technical information for you and things like that. But basically what we're looking at is, you know, continue working with the planning board as well as the council in this project. It's something that's been ongoing for two years now. We're gonna have our grand opening on the 15th of April. We obviously would like to invite you to be there, a representative at least.
What was the date, sorry?
April 15th, it's a Saturday at 1:00 P.M. And so unfortunately, I don't have any other remarks. The building size is gonna be 560 square feet. It's gonna be made up for two duplexes per unit. I'm trying to think. Drawings have been made up. We can have those available as well. Steve has a lot of that information. He's actually working as our construction supervisor on the project. And if you have any questions.
How many units do you plan on building immediately?
It truly depends on the need.
Okay. I'm sure the need will outstrip the ability to do it.
Well, last year, well, 2016, there was 13 veterans that were counted as being homeless. Seven received services at the shelter in Prescott. Six didn't. So the numbers have been staying, you know, they're still there. And what we find is that we're not taking away from the shelter, we're actually adding to the ability to service the veterans of Arustic County. That's our big thing, it's veteran-focused only.
You've had a very successful fundraiser.
You could say that, yeah.
Yes, very good.
Yeah. It turned out really well. My projections were way off. I hope that does the same in our revenue stream with the farm, but we'll see how that goes.
Yep. All right, any questions from council? All right, thank you very much. Excellent project, and hope everything works out well for you.
I believe it will.
We had Lloyd Tibbs on public input, but I don't see him here. Any other public input from anyone that would like to come forward? Just go to the microphone and give your name.
My name is Anne Wilson, I'm here for the property of 375 Belangeroe. It was, uh, it was here back in, I think, December. I said I would have the money by the 31st of January. I did, but I had a vehicle drive through my bedroom, I had nothing to count back then too. And now I'm here, and I do have the money, and I just hope that you'll take it and...
Which is the property?
375 Belangeroe.
That's the Sears Park, yeah, the Sears property.
That was listed already.
Listed, yes. Number 11. Number 11 on the list.
There wasn't a bid?
There's no bid.
No bid.
Okay. We will add it to other business here and try to deal with it at the end of the council meeting. All right, thank you very much, Anne. Anyone else have any public input on any agenda items or anything else they'd like to speak on? All right. Any conflicts of interest from any of the city council regarding any... Sorry.
I'm gonna abstain on number six for the fuel bid, fuel tank fees. I got a connection here.
Anyone else have any conflict of interest on any items? No? Consent agenda, and I'm sure everyone has looked at all of these. All of the permits for taxis and lunch wagons have all been looked at by city staff, and there's been no problem with any of them. I get a motion to pass the consent agenda, please.
Move the slate.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? One abstention.
One abstention?
She wasn't here for most of them. Building permit fees. We have a public hearing tonight on building permit fees. I think we do, anyway.
Yep.
Yes, okay. We'll open the public hearing at 6:06. Anyone here have any comments on the ordinance for the building permit fees? Any counselors? No one? We'll close the public hearing at 6:07, and council can now take action on the ordinance.
I will accept the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Anything else, Counselor Martin, comment?
I'll just bring it up after, I mean...
Another motion, you mean?
I wanna make another motion to return the fees.
Oh, okay. I'll amend it to return the fees.
Okay.
And the $25 in the 1950, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll amend it to that.
I'll amend my second.
All right, so we have a motion to set the fees and to amend the two fees for the building permits that have been put out so far this year to coincide with the new building permit fees.
They've collected more since then, so you might want to...
Is there more than two?
Yes.
How many are there?
I didn't bring the spreadsheet.
No, never mind. We'll just make it general to...
Retroactive.
Retroactive, all the fees for this year.
For this calendar year, yeah, I'll amend that.
So will I.
All right.
Good news in the city.
All those in favor? Next is the retail marijuana ordinance. We have received from the planning board an ordinance regarding recreational marijuana. At the joint meeting between the two boards, the planning board has decided it would recommend an ordinance banning retail marijuana from Caribou. Tonight, we have to set a public hearing for, I would guess we would have it on April the 10th, 2017. And have a public hearing then? I need someone just to introduce this ordinance right now.
I'll introduce ordinance number four, 2017, series, City of Caribou, County of Arustic, State of Maine, an ordinance prohibiting recreational marijuana.
Any questions or comments from council? All those in favor? We don't need any motion for a public hearing. Public hearing will be held on April the 10th at 6:00. Fuel tank bids for Caribou Public Works. And since we have our public works director here, I think I'll let him speak to this.
When we put the bids out for the fuel farm at Public Works, there was five vendors that I thought would be bidding on the project. When the bids finally came in, there was three, the other two had opted out. I did list them for you and the prices that they had come in as. I've talked to the interim city manager as well as myself, and I'd like to make the recommendation that we go with county environmental engineering for the tank system. A couple different reasons. For the difference in the price of the bids, I noticed he's a little bit higher, but we'll have a local vendor, and if we have any problems with that, they're much quicker to react, to come to the rescue. I would think if we look at the vendor from Gray, Maine, and I believe that even from Gray, Maine, they'd be all right, but I know that they'd be three, four days before they could get here, whereas county environmental, they're right from our own town, so...
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, this includes the tanks, new pumps, doesn't include the card reader system? We would install our old present card reader system onto this.
Correct. That will be a complete turnkey system with the exception of the card reader that we have now. I talked to OPW themselves, and they said that the life expectancy is 30 to 35 years for that, and even further out, as long as it's inside undercover, their potential may be right outside. The one we have is about 14 or 15 years now, so I think we're more than fine with it, the chip key works fine. The only thing that that bid price did not include, and I left it out of the bid spec was any paving around the islands. I felt as though Public Works could do that ourselves at a much cheaper price. But that does include everything, including the software hookup, the whole thing ours.
All right.
We shouldn't have any other thing to do.
I wish I would have proved this when we were talking $120,000 or something.
Well, I thought they were gonna come in at about $150,000, I think is what we talked about, and they're substantially more than that, so...
Any questions from council? Counselor Martin?
I have a problem with going through a bid process and then not giving the bid to the lower bid person if they're qualified to do the work.
I do believe that all the bidders are qualified. But it was county environmental that had worked with me through the whole project, and we had talked about the different pumps. He actually even had a supplier come up from the local power mains to talk to me about the tanks, the styles, and stuff like that. And I believe that it was $5,575 that's difference, which is not a large amount on a pre-possed $200,000 bid. I would make the recommendation to keep it in our own town. What I will do is whatever...
Did the people bidding, I mean, do we have something that says if someone is local is within X percent of whatever, then we're gonna give it to that person?
What we say in our bids is the city has the right to accept or reject any or all bids. That covers us. I mean, we done the same thing, or close to it, when we did the library roof.
Yep.
And we were shamed, we were beaten on the back of the hand, and I just think that it's a mistake. I mean, if there was a large sum, and I don't know whether to tell you that's $10,000 or $20,000, but we were within...
It's 2.5 percent is what it is.
Yeah, I think we'd make a mistake not to take the local vendor.
Could you explain how we were slapped on the level?
Well, from the people that are talking around, I mean, so a good example, we had a problem over at the library two weeks ago, the water just gushing in the roof. What we do, we call up the caller from Portland, say, hey, your roof is leaking?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what do we do with the water that's still coming in? So I went down to Powers and talked to Powers. He gave me the idea where to go look. Public Works fixed the problem, but he, as soon as he was done with his meeting, he'd come up to see us. I think that's service, and I think it has a lot to be said for it.
Yes, but it's a slippery slope when we ask for bids. I mean, if we only want local people, let's just have only local people bid.
Well, and there again, if the local people are 10, 15 percent too high, then they outbid themselves.
What's going to encourage these other people to bid if they have to be so low? And then in the end, that just escalates the price.
And I understand that, Mr. Martin, I really do. But I think within that, within 2 percent of what the bid was, I still think that we have the right to give it to our local vendor. And that's just my opinion.
A recommendation.
It's a recommendation, and I mean, by all means...
It's still council's decision.
Yeah, the council has the right to do whatever they like, so...
If someone would like to make a motion as to what we would do, we will entertain that.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the public works director.
Second it.
All those in favor? Four against? Oh, one against, passed.
Thank you.
Four, one, and one abstention. Public hearing for the Caribou Housing Agency Administration Plan, and that is tonight, I believe. So we'll open that at 17. Anne, is there anyone here to speak regarding the administration plan that has been presented?
I'll just get out the same course, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Lisa Corr, I'm the director for the Caribou Housing Agency. We advertised this public hearing last week, of course, a Republican has been on Facebook, has been on Channel 8, to my knowledge, no one has come in, made any comments, I haven't seen anything, and right, it comes to me. The 99 percent of the changes to the administration plan for 2017 is statutory by HUD. We have no say on this, so it has to go through, unfortunately. The only recommendation that I have made is the preferences for the waiting list. I've noticed that there's been a big demand lately, in the past couple of years, within the community of housing industry, is putting a veterans preference. I think that would be a great idea. That's all I have. Any questions?
That is in these recommendations?
Yes, it is. It is on page three, chapter four. About halfway down through the page.
Yours is different than what we're looking at.
Page 35, maybe?
It may have printed out different. Would you like to see my copy?
Is it?
Yeah.
It's way at the bottom on 35.
Yep, okay.
Yeah. Besides that, everything else is just definitions, like I said, per HUD, it's statutory changes or policy changes. HUD's made a lot of clarifications on terminology the past year.
Any other, anyone else speak on the changes to the administration plan? Any comments from council or questions from council? Can I get a motion to accept?
We got a hand up in the bar over there.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, this is, the veterans' preference is something that's been going on throughout the nation, and it's something that should actually be something we add to our...
It's in here now.
Great.
All right, can I... Can I get a motion from council to approve the plan, the administration plan?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Passed. Unanimous, did you? And we also have under housing is the appointment of resident member.
It recently comes to my attention from our boss and HUD rep, they're going through certain websites that we use, and we always have to list our board of commissioners. They contacted me about a month and a half ago, two months, and they asked who our resident board members were, and I said, we don't have them. Mainly what that means is, per the main state statute, since the Caribou Housing Agency is a municipality housing authority, I have to try to recruit two Section 8 families to be on our board of commissioners. And I bring this to your attention, I believe I sent you all a copy of the statute, so you have it for your review. I'd like to know, since the city council is our board of commissioners, how would they like to go about doing this? Because we only need to have a board of seven, for one thing, and two of them have to be Section 8 families.
The board has to be limited to seven, or can it be nine?
From what I understand, on the state statute, paragraph A, the very first line, each authority shall appoint seven commissioners.
Okay. So we have to put two resident ones on?
Correct.
And remove two councils?
Correct. So like I said, I was just bringing it to your attention tonight, I'd like to know how you'd like to go about approaching this?
I'm gonna make a suggestion that you reach out and try to get applications.
I can do that.
And we will set up between the council at our next meeting to determine who's gonna be taken off. By that time, if you would have some applications...
That's in two weeks?
Yeah, council, well, it's April the 10th, I don't know if that's two weeks, I guess it is.
Okay, if I can't, I will let you know?
Yeah. If you can't, we won't have it on the agenda until you have it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, as soon as I get some applicants that are interested, I will let you know.
You let Mr. McCaig know, when you've got them, then he'll put it on the agenda, and we'll deal with it at that time.
Sounds good, thank you.
Other business, we have bid approval for tax-free properties. Manager Cahagan, what have we got that are on the recommended list here?
No recommendation, it's just what was presented from our finance people.
It's like two, I guess.
Two, maybe. Almost like everyone.
Mary can I move that we approve the bids that were minimum or higher and refuse the bids that were below minimum?
Second.
I'll sort it. All those in favor? Approved.
Can you take some questions back to number eight? See if Ted Rivers is interested in that? Number nine, there's two of Butters, maybe one of them would want that? That's down across from the salvage ad there.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, still showing Dan's Living Center of Three Places on the map. I think since the building's been raised, the property probably belongs to the property owner, so if we have any documentation out there that needs to be cleaned up legally, you know, we should look at that and take care of that.
Excuse me, wouldn't number nine be one of them that met the bid?
Excuse me?
Isn't number nine one of them that met the bid? Five and nine?
Yes.
Yes.
We're looking at two different lists here.
No, I, excuse me.
He's talking about a list that nobody bid on.
No, I missed that on number nine, though. Because I, yeah, I meant just eight, excuse me. Thank you.
Or five and nine, yeah.
So take nine on.
All right, anything else? Anybody else have any other business?
Move something from public input to this for...
Oh, yes, we gotta deal with the...
Belangeroe, 348 Belangeroe.
375 Belangeroe. What are councils' wishes?
Do you have the money to pay?
Yes.
Tomorrow, or now?
Yeah, I'll pay now.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Business day.
Well, maybe not, another car might run through the house or something, you better...
That was not funny, okay, I was not impressed.
I'm sure it wasn't.
I'm gonna make it tonight.
I was holding it. How do you guys vote this question?
She'll take it tonight.
I'm taking the money tonight.
Tonight, then.
I just don't wanna be like a weirdo.
Yeah, I make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Second?
I love it, I've been there for three years. Who's the second? Who's the second?
All those in favor? Unanimous. Good luck, Anne, I hope you don't have any more. I've had bad luck for a while now.
I think I've had my share of bad luck. Thank you.
All right. Any other business?
Our new events marketing coordinator, Christina comes from Texas, been on the job in Caribou. She waved to Austin on the way down and on the way up. She's been on the job now for two weeks, and everything is progressing forward with the marathon and the Moose Lottery and everything else that the city's planning on during the summer. She's out at the rec center, working right next to my office as well, and we've got a lot of things planned for this coming year and next year, so I just wanted to introduce Christina from the rec department and the city of Caribou. She had a open house last week, and it was very, very well attended, so she must get up and say a few words.
Oh, I could be almost hot.
Yes, I will. Yes, I will.
Well, hello, I recognize all of you, and I'm really happy to be back in Caribou. I was in Austin for about 13 years, and I don't think one time when anyone asked me where I was from, I've never said Texas, I always said things, so really happy to be back home. We're gonna do some great events, and everybody's been great, and I'm excited to be here, so stop on by and see you whenever you want to.
All right, I see you have it acclimated to the climate?
Yeah, I see that.
And we're indoors.
I've just spilled my blood.
She's remembering why she left.
Yeah, we have a new librarian here as well that has not...
That's right.
Been introduced to council. Anastasia, do you wanna come up and introduce yourself to everybody?
But she does get her reports in on time.
Yes, she did.
I do, I do. That would be a good girl.
She sometimes wants to come to meetings when we're not even around.
I know. I know, I'm sorry. First of all, I'm so pleased to finally attend one of the city council meetings. My name is Anastasia Wykel, and I come up all the way from Old Orchard Beach, so I've been here in Maine for, well, since 1994, I'm really from Pennsylvania. But the cold is similar, so I'm okay with that. I'm sorry I missed the first meeting because I started on the 23rd and didn't realize it was a council meeting a couple days later, and it was a death of a family in February, but I'm here, and first things first is I want to thank the city council for bringing me into Caribou and for supporting the library as you do, as best as you can in these difficult situations, so we're very appreciative. We hope that members of the council can come and visit us at the library so we can share with you our added value, what we bring to the patrons onsite and offsite. And I look forward to working with Christine, yes, you know it, right? So everything is good, and that's a good man over there, this guy right there.
Fire chief?
David.
Oh, David.
Well, he's a good man, too. Oh, yes, but that's another story. All right, so thank you very much, and I'll just step aside now.
Well, thank you, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Any other new business? No? I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Can I, sorry, Mr. Tibbs was on for public input, apparently he was late, can we make accommodations for him?
I apologize for being late, I thought it was 6:30.
Go ahead.
You have to go to the microphone, please. I prefer to stand here.
No.
You have to go to the microphone.
If nothing to be resolved here today, I'd like to come back with my attorney. The council, I believe, has a letter from my attorney, concerning the property. And should have a letter from the county commissioner's office saying they feel they don't wanna get involved because of the issue.
Do we have a letter from an attorney?
We do.
Okay.
This whole thing has been totally overwhelming, obviously. Obviously, we need more time. I don't know.
Okay.
The agreement was, did you give a letter through the council from Chris?
They, they haven't not seen it yet.
They have not seen it. Look, we talked about 150 months, and by this fall, we'll clear up most of the back factors. However, I got to thinking about it. We have many obligations, and now the, now the bell frill, flapping bell frill. And they don't wanna be put under that type of situation. If something happens this fall, I have to come back, and who knows what's gonna happen, like people die, I might get sick, I might, might not be able to work this fall. So I don't wanna be put under any more stress. And I don't know how the council feels about that.
All right, well. I mean, we will have to wait till we get the letter, and there's nothing else right now that council can do anyway. Your thing has been acted on, and unless someone from council decides to make a motion to change that, that's where it's at, so.
Excuse me, I don't understand. But again, I'm screaming at me today.
There, there was a motion.
May I ask why the letters weren't, why the letters was not brought to your attention before?
Well, I don't know that, but I'm.
Even if the letter wasn't brought to their attention, you've already just said that you would not honor the letter.
Oh, yes, I would. Yes, I would honor it, but I guess I would.
Well, you just said that. Give honor if, if he knows, right?
I wouldn't be talking to my attorney, paying him to go against what he's advising you.
But didn't you just tell me you, you weren't sure about it now, because you don't know what's gonna happen?
I don't know how we plan on doing this. I'm just saying, if something happens this fall and I cannot work.
Oh.
You understand what I'm saying now?
Yep.
But we will be paying $150 a month, for the, for you all, and then he wants to take care of the rest this fall, unless something drastic happens between now and September.
Well, we'll, we'll wait till we see the letter and look at it and decide whether if someone wants to reopen it or not. Right now, it is closed, there is nothing more for us to do. So we'll have to wait till we see the letter and see.
And we're not leaving this for the outcomes.
Leaves you, as of right now, leaves you where you've been at for the last 10 years, I guess. The city owns the house, and you're there. I mean, there really isn't anything else for us to discuss at this time, so. Thank you. Now I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Four personnel.
Yep, MRS A405, we discuss.
Okay. So move.
Hold on a second, ma'am.
Regarding.
My property taxes.
Oh.
Oh.
Sorry.
Yeah, I will let you do that. It's not normal, a public input session at the start, which is for the public, which we announce. Anyone that has any.
It'll take me long.
That want to bring up, can bring them up. Go ahead.
We haven't.
No.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Duane Terry O'Sher. I've lived in Caribou most of my life. I live in the same dwelling that my parents lived at, 250 Lombard, Caribou. Different dwelling. I've been there since the late 80s, raised two children there, still with my wife, my kids are growing, we play. I've been faithfully paying my taxes all through the years. Every year I'd buy a tax return, I came down and faithfully paid my property taxes on my mobile home. I do not own the land I live on, I just pay a mortgage on the trailer. Close to my parents, that's how they wanted it, so that's right. I've gotten several letters in the mail stating that I'm outstanding in my taxes. I don't understand how this is all occurred. Again, I have the same name as my father, and I live at the same address, so I could see how things could get confused. I've been paying since 2012 all my taxes. I started out at $100 a month, and then when my wife lost her job, I had to drop it down to $50 a month, which I spoke to Carl about. He informed me that I was doing good up until that point. Now he said, "I don't know how you're gonna get a head pay of $50 a month," but it's all I can swing. So since 2012, I've kept my records, not realizing that I was paying on taxes back in '02. I don't understand how this could happen. I'd just like to have you guys take a look at what's going on, where the confusion may have lied. The last paper I got from the city, and I did not understand how anything was laid out because nothing matches my receipts to theirs, or I have receipts that you folks do in the past. I figured out almost $3,500 that I paid, not realizing they were going back in '02. I spoke to Carl two weeks ago about this to find out where I stand and what's expected of me. And I wanna pay what's due. But when he said they're going back to '02, I almost fell out of the chair. I don't understand how this could occur, and it has been this long, how could you have thrown me out before this? I first started out with a 69 mobile home. Well, permits, everything Mr. Bowyer, that, own the company, and I moved my trailer on the lot. In 97, we chose to buy a new mobile home from Crawford's, so she took my 69 in trade, which there couldn't have been a lien on because she could have taken it if there was. So that kinda overwhelmed me when Carl told me it's missing from '02 that they're going back on. I know, I know I paid my taxes. There may have been years, 10, 1010, and maybe 11, that I didn't own because of switching jobs. Times get hard when I was unemployed, but I don't think I owe that far back. I mean, you stop in five grand, and I don't think I owe that much. I paid $3,500 since 2012. Where it's gone, I don't know. Right then, I paid the way he's at the desk, and I get my receipt printed out. I have to tell him that it's in file 11, city owned. It's a little embarrassing to have.
So the property is tax-acquired already, the city owns it?
Apparently so, yes. The last letter I got from you said that something's not done by March 30th, that it's not prepared. I didn't realize there was that much outstanding, and I don't understand how it could be. The only thing I can think of that maybe possibly could have happened is when I paid on my property taxes for my mobile home. It may have went on Dwayne and Judy's parents, where it's the same as the guy, it's the same law. So I don't know if something got misinterpreted or misfiled, or I put Dwayne Jr. on everything. Everything I get back doesn't have Junior on it. My father is still alive, so it makes it quite confusing. So I guess what I'm asking is to look at what I paid a little more carefully maybe, and see if that is the outstanding allowance that I owe.
You claim you paid $3,500 in what period of time?
Since 2012. The paperwork that Carl gave me didn't quite match up with what I paid. Maybe you guys can have a seat better than I could make heads of tails of it. That's what the city council and I paid.
Well, I mean, we'll have to contact Carl and that, and get information from him. He's gonna have this as well, so.
I just like to bring your attention to that. I'm not ducking out on it, I wanna pay what's due.
Yeah.
That seems a little bit.
And you're, this is what you, did you give this to Carl?
He looked at it, he tried to compare it with what you guys had on the record, that's what's on the page, to what I paid. I've got every receipt, plus there's months on there that I paid double.
Yeah, but you have receipts for all of this, so, yeah, okay.
It goes all the way back to '12.
When you get your, a copy of your bill, your tax bill, does it say city of Caribou on it?
Well, that's another thing.
Because that's where your payment should be.
I know this is gonna sound kind of odd, but I've never ever gotten a bill saying Duane Terry O'Sher Law.
How long is it?
Well, he wouldn't, the property's been tax-acquired.
Right, so it's gonna say city of Caribou.
I've been logging back years. I've never gotten a bill from your folks, ever. My mother's saying, "Oh, tax time, pay your bill." And okay, you can tax it, I'm gonna cash my check to come here and pay my taxes.
But if he comes and pays with a check, and they don't realize it's a city of Caribou. You pay cash, okay. If they don't realize it's a city of Caribou, it could be going on a.
What the funny part was, is when I started paying on these, the receipts that I acquired have the breakdown of the balance and the amount put through to the principal and the interest, and they also, this is what Carl did for me, it was on the outstanding, or highlight here, she said, "You're paying all the way back to '02." Well, that's when I practically fell out of the chair, I don't.
Do you have receipts, not from back to, well, I mean, we, we don't have any information here, so we can't get into discussion. But we have to determine when it was tax-acquired?
I don't even know when that was.
Yeah.
I don't know. The only thing I found, and it's probably doing me harm, but this is all, I want to draw all my records at home. If you can understand that, I know it's quite faded.
That's 2002.
That's '02.
When did you say you got your new trailer?
97.
Did you get, did you get your consent exemption?
No. Not with the city of Caribou, it's the property.
But did you?
But did you?
I don't, I don't believe so. I, I've never gotten a tax bill from a city of Caribou, ever, that I can remember.
Well, this one here, you got one, it's 2002.
That was '02. Is that a?
And you were.
I have to pay, or is that a receipt that I?
No, well, it says you're behind it this time. Yeah, it was, it was 14931, and then went down to 972 with a payment or whatever, so. Anyway, we'll have Manager Keegan check and see with Carl, see what we can come up with.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Get back to you.
See if we can get this all.
Yeah.
Give me a figure.
Hang on to these with all your information.
I'm not sure if Carl has my number, but I can get in touch with Carl. And leave you my information so that he can get in touch with me.
What is your number?
It's 207 by 549293.
You got that, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all, but we talk, have your name.
Uh, did we have a motion to go into executive session or not?
Yes, I did, I made the motion.
Could I, could I approach, please?
Yeah.
This is on behalf of Cliff Mazorall's property on 32 Oak Press Avenue.
Just state your name, boys. State your name.
Uh, my name is Louis LeVoy.
Yeah?
And it was from understanding that the property was acquired through the city of Caribou. And I'm just wanting, if there's any way that I could get that property back on the executive for his estate. And I have no idea that. Number 16 on the.
Yeah. I read that yesterday, wondering about that.
37, 3762.
Are there, are there any heirs to the property, Lou?
There are, and I've contacted one of his family members, actually a couple of them, and to see if they could help me out with, you know, with the funds to get the property back if, if can be. And they either don't have any money, or they're not willing to help out, but I've got the money in my pocket to pay the back tax debt, and if that's, if that's an option, I'd like to do that.
There were no bids.
There were no bids on that property right now.
Yeah, but it's a legal issue.
To whom would the property go to?
Excuse me?
To.
He's the executor. He's just the executor, so he administers it, right, so.
Goes back to the, to his heirs?
Yes.
Not you?
Not me. You're just helping out to get it back to them, fulfilling my duties.
Somebody just probably would need to sign the release for their interest in the property and then use, go through a lawyer to.
I think all he wants to do is pay the back taxes and just continue on. He'd still be the executor of the will. And the family would still own the property. That's all it is, is reverting it back to them.
So who are we gonna send the bills to in the future?
Well, we've been sending it to.
You've been getting the will?
I have not, only because.
Okay.
Let, tell them why.
My mail goes to 93 Bennett Drive, which is my business. City of Caribou has been sending the mail to 110 Watson Memorial, which is my residence. I don't even own the mailbox there, it belongs to my girlfriend. By the time I get home, she's checked the mail, threw it in a, threw it in a box, and there it says.
That's when I leave the mailbox there.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Talk to Shelley.
I did, I, yeah.
Or change the address that you want.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you want the address changed.
The address should go, or the, the mail should go to.
Yeah, just get ahold of Penny further.
So do we need a motion to accept his money?
We need a motion.
I make a motion to accept Louis' money. Second.
All in favor? All right, pay the back taxes and.
Thank you, Louis.
Revert back.
Will I pay that tonight or tomorrow?
I think tomorrow.
I'm not taking.
Not taking the money tonight?
Have you got cash on you?
I've got some cash, but.
No, I'm taking, she's got cash.
Just come see her tomorrow.
Don't you say cash. Well, you're not gonna have any cash by the time you leave.
Thank you, Louis.
All right, thank you.
You gotta correct your mailing address so you get the bills in the future?
93 Bennett Drive, too.
Change that tomorrow when you make that, make sure she will.
Thank you.
I'd like to go into executive session.
We're gonna leave.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, everyone, for coming.
Thank you, and welcome. So move.